We can, I'm gonna go ahead and get started while we wait for the agenda to be, to be put up. Cause the first one that we have is the approval of the board minutes from August ninth. So can I have a motion for that, please?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions about that? Can I, I'm gonna do a roll call vote then, if there's no questions. Desai is a yes. Dimig?
Aye.
Gangware?
Aye.
Gaiman?
Yes.
Lisette?
Aye.
Nord?
Aye.
Parsons?
Aye.
Threen?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the board minute, of the board workshop minutes for August ninth. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, well, I can't do that, sorry. Roll call, vote again. Desai, yes. Dimig?
Aye.
Gangware?
Aye.
Gaiman?
Yes.
Lisette?
Aye.
Nord?
Aye.
Parsons?
Aye.
Threen?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Next, we have, we did talk about this, the PSBA contract, motion to approve the contract with PSBA to assist SLSD in updating the policies. We talked about this in workshop that we would like to table that decision. Can I have a motion to table that?
Motion to table that.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments about that? Okay, another roll call vote. Desai, yes. Dimig?
Aye.
Gangware?
Aye.
Gaiman?
Yes.
Lisette?
Aye.
Nord?
Aye.
Parsons?
Aye.
Threen?
Aye.
And Smith?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to the superintendent's report. Does anyone object if I take four A through C together?
No.
No? Can I have a motion for that, please?
So moved.
Second.
No?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Anita, you froze for a second. Is that my computer or?
I'm in trouble with my internet, it looks like.
No, it was, I was.
I asked for a motion for four. I think that was me.
Anita's having difficulty with her video. I was using a school issued device earlier and I had the same problem. But I decided to switch devices.
You're back, I think, now.
Seem good now, Anita.
Okay, I'm gonna try again. If my family's on the internet, they should probably get off. Can I have a motion for four A through C, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Jen?
Second.
Is there any questions or concerns about those, those policies, where they are second readings?
Solid. I appreciate the effort put in on those. As I said earlier, very important issues and some are new, some are revised. Thankful for them. Thank you. I think those are mostly Mr. Ruff's doing, but appreciate it.
Anything else? And please speak up if I, if I don't see, because I can't see everybody on my screen. So if anyone wants to talk, please speak up. Or anybody else? All right, I'm going to do a roll call vote again. Desai, yes. Dimig?
Aye.
Gangware?
Aye.
Gaiman?
Yes.
Lisette? Lisette?
Need?
Aye.
Nord?
Aye.
Parsons?
Aye.
Threen?
Aye.
And Smith?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to four D, motion to approve the MOU with the Coopersburg Police and Upper Stockton Township Police Department. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or concerns about this? This is a standard agreement that we have every year. No questions? Yes?
I do have a quick question. It was on page twelve, I believe. I was just looking at the language about interviewing students, I believe victims and suspects in a situation. And there were some in, I don't know if they were inconsistencies or, there's just some slightly different language about parents or guardians and when they're notified. So, you know, for, for paragraph two point A, it says that the school entity will notify the parent guardian of victim when the law enforcement agency interviews. And that they, the guidance counselor or similar, personnel may be present. And then in the witness section, it says that the personnel should be present as opposed to maybe. And then in section four, it says that suspects and shall be, parents of suspects shall be, at least one parent guardian of a student suspect will be notified before the student is interrogated. So I just wanted to get some clarity on the, the difference between the, the varying language.
I could, I could handle that. The suspects and custodial interrogation would involve the student's rights. Therefore, the parent would have an obligation, would have an obligation to get the parent there. Because there are, there are ramifications that would involve his civil liberties. And the other two provisions, should and may, I believe are really not significant differences. It's not shall versus should. It's should and may, I read very similarly. But the interrogation one is, is definitely different. That helps answer your concerns.
That does. Great, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, roll call vote again. Desai, yes. Dimig?
Aye.
Gangware?
Aye.
Gaiman?
Yes.
Lisette?
Yes.
Nord?
Aye.
Parsons?
Yes.
Threen?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to four E, I think is a presentation, I think from Mr. Ruth.
Yeah, I'm just gonna briefly speak to an introduction on, on the Commonwealth's testing platform that they have provided information in the last week to school districts about. So several weeks ago, the Commonwealth had shared that they were going to be providing a free of charge COVID related testing program that would be available to schools, should they opt into that. On August sixteenth, there was a press release from the Department of Health and the Department of Ed explaining that essentially this testing program would be a pooled testing program that essentially would break schools, should, the school district, should they want to opt into it. You would be able to build twenty-five student or staff cohorts and do pooled testing, which is a cohort based testing, attempts to identify asymptomatic positive individuals. So, you know, the general idea here is, you know, you don't, you're not getting, and I'm on the, you know, the Concentric PowerPoint that is attached here. You know, for a pool test, for those who are not, you know, living and breathing this on a routine basis, you would take the pool. The entire pool would self-test. The self-test results would be put into, you know, a secured device. They would be, they would be tested. And then there would be an indication if the pool has positivity in it. And then from there, additional testing in the form of PCR antigen testing would be done. So generally speaking, you know, you can kind of see that this is really a process to identify asymptomatic positives and not do initially in the, in the conversation with this, with the Commonwealth, it wasn't very clear what they were gonna do. So the general goal here is to identify asymptomatic positives, build in an additional layer of testing within the pool then, to identify who the, the positive individual would be, you know, from there. My goal with providing this information with you in a conversation with Dr. Musoline was to, you know, from the school district side, this is an optional component. Testing is one of the components that the CDC and the Department of Health discuss as a layer to the layered mitigation that, that was discussed throughout the, the opening components of this meeting. This is an optional component with which we as a district would have to opt into. Then upon opting into that process, we would then solicit participation. Meaning that even if we opted in, we would have to get, you know, essentially permission from, you know, families that they would want their child to be a part of that. You know, some of the basic, you know, conversations about this and you can kind of see from the presentation, there's a thousand plus schools in twenty-five states. We can bring staff members from Concentric to do a presentation directly to the board. They were not available, you know, to come today. I did sit through a specific presentation for our county as well as one of their webinars, which, you know, occurred on Thursday and Friday of last, Wednesday, Thursday, excuse me, of last week. And, and the sound of it is, is positive. However, you know, it does rely on participation, on voluntary participation. But it would be an additional layer of individuals. Some of the components they talked about was the ability to then provide weekly testing to cohorts of individuals that would potentially, you know, provide a greater level of oversight over, you know, say indoor sports or, you know, a play or things like that. You know, generally speaking, the timeline that was described to us is should the school district decide that this is something that they wanted to participate in or we wanted to participate in. The timeline is a ten day. It would take about ten days to, to start the onboarding process. And then, you know, Concentric essentially operates the entire process. We would get assigned a staff member who would identify a day of the week with which the testing would occur in the school district. They would fully staff it, come in, complete the training of what, how the testing goes. Again, this is self swab. And they have done this K to, K to twelve in, in several states around the country. That, that staff member mans the process. The results are taken by secure courier to a state lab. You get the results from the initial pool test in one day. And then that results of the pool test inform the next level of tests. So essentially, within three days, you would be able to identify the asymptomatic positive, should there be one. Or you'd also be able to have that extra level of information to say that, you know, there are no asymptomatic positives within the pool. So, you know, generally, I just wanted to provide this information to you all as a determination on a first step of one. Would you like me to bring the Concentric staff into the next board meeting where they could provide a much more detailed, you know, understanding of what this is? And then we can, you know, make a more informed decision on that from a perspective there. But if that is not something that the board seizes a value, you know, we would obviously, you know, be able to provide additional information. If anyone has any questions?
So Mr. Ruth, are you looking for us for guidance on just bringing somebody back in to talk about this? You said more in depth, is that what you're asking for?
So one, one of two things, so it could either be that you're interested in getting a much more detailed, you know, overview of that than what's beyond this presentation. And we could, we could bring in and they're more than willing to come in to speak to that component in greater detail. Two, i- if, you know, you've read through the presentation, you've read through the press release that are both linked here. And as a, as a school board, the decision is that this is something that we believe there's value to. Even if five percent of, of individuals want to do this, or ten percent of individuals want to do this, we could start that process and then solicit participation from there. Again, it's not a required process. This is one hundred percent paid for by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So in terms of a cost to us, you know, there would be, you know, a time cost of, of us, you know, developing, you know, messaging. But they provide, according to the staff that I've met with now twice, they provide all of the communications. It's fully staffed by them and, and, you know. Now, in terms of how that works in reality, obviously, no one in, in our region has used this as of yet. But there is some significant interest amongst the schools in the region.
Mr. Ruth, if I'm understanding this right, if you have a pool of kids and if you have one or two that don't want to do it, whose parents don't agree to it, then does that invalidate the results?
No, in general, they, the discussion being is that Universal, if you look at their past practice, what they've described is they will have pools anywhere from ten percent to forty percent of the student population. You know, they have no, very rarely do they have anything, I believe, that they stated in my meetings that I was in, above forty percent. And, you know, it's common, you know, they shared the example in the state of California, about twenty percent pool rate is about what they get. In the state of Texas, about a ten percent pool rate. But it provides, you know, at least a somewhat of a viewpoint of that asymptomatic nature of those individuals. And it's unlikely that in any situation, if you're looking at a classroom in a K six setting in Southern Lehigh, where you would have students under the age of twelve, it's highly unlikely that you would get, you have to look at each class as a cohort or a pool. So if you got twenty percent of a class of twenty-five or thirty students, it's a small number, but it would give you, you know, that a small snapshot of what that classroom or that cohort or that pool looks like. Like I shared, you could also have that encouraged with athletic teams and so on and so forth. Should that be the direction that, that individuals wanted to go? And that's really one of the components that they shared, that a lot of school districts use it in as well.
What do they, what do they, where would they, where would they test the children, especially the younger aged kids? Do they, would that be, would you go down to the nurse to do that? Like where would those tests be administered? Did they explain that to you, Mr. Ruth?
They identify a space typically. It really depends on the size of the pool.
Private from other individuals?
Yes.
No cost and a hundred percent voluntary?
Correct.
I guess one of the things I would ask is, so certainly if we have a mask optional approach, I think that there would be benefit to a program like this. But what is the benefit of a, if, if we do have a masking, universal masking policy, what would be the benefit of this? In practical terms, because nobody would really have to quarantine because of the masking.
And, and that's where, when they shared that conversation in, in the two presentations I have attended by the, the organization is in situations where masking, even in those, you know, mask mandated situation, you obviously, you know, the CDC guidelines is an indoor mask mandate, not an outdoor mask mandate. And, and it's also a component of other optional, you know, other components of our daily activities that where, you know, a mask might. So, you know, we have one indoor sport right now. And the idea that activity is an indoor sport, you know, it might be a way to then say, while volleyball is occurring indoors, you could use this testing program to kind of go around that process as well and provide respite because they're active in a physical activity. And this would be a layer of mitigation that would support the removal of a mask for an indoor activity. So there are advantages in that type of situation, which would then provide that level of support in there. And it also goes to the component of, you know, some folks have shared like, you know, a tiered system. This would allow you to kind of ease out of the tier as well and additional, you know, piece of mitigation on top of everything else.
And could we also then use it in situations such as, you know, musical performances, band, choir, that type of thing? And how about lunches? You know, because that's gonna be the major area of residual concern. If we do have masking, is exposure during lunch and the need to quarantine even in those situations? Which I was gonna ask about later in the meeting as it was, to see whether there are any things that we have in place. And I know we'll get to it with respect to separating kids a little bit more, but.
You know, I honestly, for in terms of a lunch, I'm not sure how to identify that large because they, the, the maximum, I believe, is twenty-five in, in the pool that they, they, they would have, so.
I guess my question is, because I know the kids, and I was gonna ask more about, I guess we can tackle a little bit of it now. You know, kids were signing up for lunch groups, for example. And my understanding was, is so that you could rotate and kind of diminish the load in the cafeteria. Because my understanding is kids will be eating in the cafeterias, but I know you're gonna get to that. So I don't, I don't know if you could restrict it to that cohort. I don't know how big the groups are, though. You know, that wasn't made clear to me. So if it's too big, I understand.
It's varying by building, so the use of alternative spaces is dependent on the building. So there will be alternative spaces used for lunches. So, you know, the high school, the gym and the cafeteria will be used for lunch. The middle school, both, you know, the, the pit or the, there's a secondary lunchroom and the primary lunchroom. At Liberty Bell, we're gonna have to use half of the gym and half of the cafeteria. So, you know, these types of things are gonna happen. And then there could be additional extent, extension in there as well. But, you know, in terms of building a cohort, I'm sure that we can have a discussion, you know, what is the best practice over what has happened in the past with this organization? You know, they have been in California and Texas for, for over a year. So the ability to, and Massachusetts, I believe. So the ability to use their best practice and what they've done in other places, I think, is of value as well. And getting into that, you know, the, the regional representative would be out of, out of Philadelphia. And she has experience, the school district of Philadelphia did use this last year as well.
Just following up on, on Dr. Smith's comment too about, you know, if we have a mask. Her question about if we have a mask mandate, would this really be necessary? But I think, you know, obviously, even if we decide to, to start the year with a mask mandate, our goal obviously is, you know, is, it's dynamic, right? And so the goal wouldn't be that we won't have that for the entire year. So I think that, you know, having this option and, and, you know, or at least exploring it further, I don't really see it. To Mr. Dimig's point, I mean, there's no cost to us. It's completely voluntary. And, you know, we might, I personally would like to hear more about the potential applications and how we could use it to mitigate and provide other opportunities for some of those activities that you were referring to, some of the indoor sports and things like that. You know, that, that might give us some flexibility, even if we do have a mask mandate, that depending on the cohort and the participation rates, might be able to give them some, some relief from that.
I do, I just have to say it again, because I think it's really important, especially in this, you know, these conversations. No, no one would ever be tested without consent of a parent. So the district would have to opt in. And then we manage an onboarding, and like I said, the onboarding takes about ten days per Concentric, so the onboarding process. But you can also do the consent process while you're, the onboarding is like physically being done as well. And again, they share all that, and the only people that would participate are those that are interested in participating. So, you know, you know, that, that is extremely important. And it also would provide, you know, and, and based on the conversation we've had, you'd be, people would also be able to opt in should they see proof of concept working and that. They do recommend pretty strongly that when you, if you would have a positive pool that you, you try to use only PCR testing as a reference to the, to the positive pool because of the, you know, there'll be, they, they do believe that there's a greater level of false positives on the antigen test. And we can provide as much or as little support as we do staff wise. And I would recommend providing no support staff wise, meaning that they discussed, school districts could have their nurses participate in the process and so on. I would prefer to keep the, the, the organization's staff, because our nurses are, you know, not gonna have any time to, to become experts in this process, and they are able to provide the staff member. So again, they would identify a day of the week where the pool test occurs. They would also identify a day of the week. And again, because we're a mid-sized school district, we would likely share a staff member with another district in the region if they're interested, and they would build a schedule around that as well, is, is how it was described in our, in our discussion.
Are employees eligible?
Yes.
In any way?
Yeah.
So you could, you could have twenty-five teachers at Liberty Bell in a pool?
Yes, sir.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, this sort of seems like a no-brainer to me. I mean, in a way, I guess you're kind of getting a sense of your case positivity rate in a crude way? Is that, have they, have they said anything about that from where they've used it in other states? I mean, aren't you getting a sense of, of the, the health of, of the, of the, of the, of the school or the pool in total?
You're getting, yeah, you're getting a small snapshot of low, the most small, you know, the most realistic local snapshot that we would likely get. And, and again, of the pool, like you share. And, and the reality there is that it, it, it does give an indication of that asymptomatic positive component of this. It does take three days to get, identify who. So if we were, if we were in a pool right now and I was positive, it would take three days to identify that I was actually positive, though. Which, you know, it's probably better than not identifying that I was positive.
Yeah, it, it might not be a bad idea to go and look at their website and look at the technology and look how the pooling is done. I think also parents need to be informed that they're using DNA as a way to go about this testing and they're pulling it in. So what's being done with that? How is it being collected or trashed or whatever they're gonna do to it long term? They're just looking at the website while you all were talking. I, I've got some questions that I'd be a little bit hesitant to rush into this.
Absolutely, and that's, that's one of the reasons why I do think there is value in bringing them into, bringing their staff in here, because I would not be able to give it justice to, to a hundred percent of, of all the questions that people would have.
So then would it be fair to say that we, are we all in favor of having them come in and do a, a presentation for us at our next meeting? If they're available?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
I would just, the only other comment I wanna make is I would really, I echo Mr. Ruth's comment that, that, you know, we should not burden our school nursing staff any further. So I, I think I would only wanna entertain this if, if that you know, very clear that we were not gonna provide staffing for it. Because they have had a really difficult year last year, and I imagine it's gonna be challenging this year. We just don't wanna stress, put any more stressors on them.
And they did make it clear that you do not have to provide any staff. They did say that if you wanted to provide staff for, for any reason, that you could. But it was one of the few questions that I asked in both of the sessions that I attended.
Great.
Okay. So I will, I will look at, at that and get a date.
Okay, thank you. And then moving on to four F, I think is you as well.
Yep. So just to provide some updated data, you know, and, and very similar to the last meeting, I'm not gonna go through and, and read every component. But based on our June, you know, the last time I presented the last board meeting, looking back to June eleventh to, to the most recent week, you can see an incident, the incident rate of a hundred thousand individuals for Lehigh County, you can see the trend line that is existing here. I do believe that, you know, the next piece kind of gives you the idea over the course of this January of twenty twenty-one to August of eighteen. So you can see that, you know, there is a rise in cases. The rise is not as significant as it was at the holiday season. Or if, if you recall, you know, when we did come back four days a week, it's, it's trending in that same region. But, you know, March of, of two thousand twenty-one is when we did return the students four days a week to in-person school. So we're in that place. And the bottom graph is looking at a June to, to, to present, you know, identif- identification of the hundred cases, cases per hundred thousand, excuse me. The, the PCR positivity rate follows a very similar trend line. When we're looking at this, just as a reminder, the way the CDC identifies levels of community transmission is an and/or statement. So if one of the two classifications is in the category, they, they identified as that. So right now, the cases per hundred thousand is in the high. And the PCR positivity is still just in the, the, the substantial. But because one of the classifications is in there, it goes. And, and very similarly, you can see the PCR positivity rate is a lot more movement over the course of that same January to August trend line. And the June to today, you can see there, there is a rise there as well. And to the comment that was made earlier, you know, our initial health and safety plan was passed on June twenty-eighth. And you can see that's like the bottom of all of this. So, you know, we were in a place where, you know, things were, you know, essentially non-existent. And this is just a summary of where the counties are across the country, not really relevant to our conversation. Maybe you can see that it's overwhelmingly in the substantial or high transmission level. So when we look at where this is, you know, we combine those two pieces, you can see that from June to today, you have a, a, a case rate increase, you have a PCR positivity increase, and we are at two weeks in the high transmission level. To Mr. Dimig's point at the last meeting, getting a little bit more of a snapshot of those four zip code identifications. So at that same time, you can see here, so the first column in July seventh, that, again, the zip code data for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the COVID data tracker is not great because it just gives totals. So what these are total cases for those zip codes up until that date. So as of July seventh, eighteen oh three four, I'm at seven hundred sixteen. So you can see an increase to seven hundred and fifty as of August twentieth. I hope that makes sense. Eighteen oh three six, which, you know, we shared, expands outside of the school district's boundaries. You can see the growth there. And the other two had much smaller growth. But again, those two also expand outside the school district boundaries. So not every case that's assigned to the, the bottom three zip codes here would be, can I say that are students or staff members or, or students or families that live in the Southern Lehigh School District? Same request in the hospitalization data, so I went back to June twenty-eighth on the hospitalization data, just to kind of give you. Same request in the hospitalization data. So I went back to June 28th on the hospitalization data, just to kind of give you an idea of of where the, you know, the number of COVID patients hospitalized in Lehigh County. The state of Pennsylvania will tell you how many pediatric ICU beds there are, but they will not tell you how many pediatric COVID patients are hospitalized. So the availability of beds is is there, but not the the breakdown of that. So you can see the total number of COVID patients hospitalized has increased. And and, you know, the number of people in the adult ICU as well as individuals on ventilators. So that period of time.
And Tom, a question for you that I've wondered why is it that when you look at Northampton? It's exceedingly low, given population and what shows in their hospital data versus Lehigh County? Does the health systems shift patients to a COVID facility that's in Lehigh County versus taking care of them in Northampton?
I I again, I could be wrong in this, but I believe it's because St. Luke's Fountain Hill and LVHN Cedar Crest are both in Lehigh County.
Okay.
But that that's that's just an inference on on my part. But, you know, Fountain Hill may not be, but it's right on the border if it's not, but but you're correct. The Northampton hospital data is tiny compared to the Lehigh County hospital data.
Right. St. Luke's Fountain Hill is is Lehigh County, Tom.
Yeah, so it's probably due to just the significant amount of beds that are available in those two facilities.
That that makes sense that it's it's just in Lehigh County. It just, you know, I always thought it was Bethlehem proper, but I guess not.
So and then when you look at what's in Northampton County, you would have Lehigh Valley Mullenberg, the new Lehigh Valley location in Nazareth. Easton Hospital, which is St. Luke's facility, and then St. Luke's Anderson. So all much smaller in terms of total bed count than than those other two.
Right, thank you.
And then when you're looking at the vaccination status, again, not much has changed in that on the pediatric, you know, juvenile vaccination. I can say that we had over 50 individuals, and that's not just students. We had 50 individuals attend the vaccination clinic over 50 last week, which is a pretty reasonable number when I look at, and I'm not going to share the other numbers. At East Penn, I believe, at a vaccination clinic today, Parkland has one on Thursday, and our numbers were very similar to what theirs are in much larger areas. So that was also a part of the press release that was shared in the testing program was to increase school-based vaccination clinics. I'm in in conversation right now on just trying to get a date for the potentially book a date for the potential of a booster clinic later in in early October. Just to provide that to this community as well. So that would be available to anyone that's interested, again, voluntary. And then the CDC data tracker has, you know, this breaks down Lehigh County where you can see, and again, this is as of Thursday, the 19th, where the percentages are of individuals in total in the population. To the to the question earlier about, you know, school-based vaccination, you know, I can address that a little greater, but, you know, and it also goes to the pool testing. There is value in in just seeking that voluntarily, you know, that information voluntarily. Meaning that should there be a need to do, you know, contact tracing or things like that? You know, right now, our school nurses can look individuals up in the system, which potentially takes time. You know, there is value in potentially just having people provide this information voluntarily if they're comfortable, not requiring it. But it would make the nurses, you know, similar to how we would collect other vaccination data. Which the required vaccine you know, process, but that is another conversation probably for a little bit.
Mr. Ruth, can I just ask on that? Is is that something that is? You know, if parents want to give that in, or is there going to be a form sent home or is there a plan or no?
We do have a a communication ready to go out. It's just one of those things where I do not want to, you know, upset people further. But it would be beneficial, you know, if they did share that and we can, you know, seek that information pretty easily, you know, i- if that is something that, you know, there's agreement and generally that in the value of that. Again, it's not a requirement.
Valuable personally, because I think all the, the more data we have to inform our decision making going forward, the better off we will be. And if we can show that we have, you know, exceptionally high vaccination rate, particularly in secondary schools, then, you know, we might be able to make some differential decisions based on that data. So I think the more data we have, the better. You know, we, to your point, we collect the vaccination data for every other immunization. And now if we can ask people to voluntarily dispose it, I think it would just be another really helpful point to have.
And that absolutely brings up the point that we would potentially be able to say, you know, building A, you know, the high school, you know, 50% of the students are vaccinated. Well, that could potentially build into some other conversations or 60% of the students are vaccinated. And I'd be able to provide that data just in generalities to to this group to be able to say this is where we are. And you couple that with the, you know, Lehigh County having, you know, one of the highest vaccination rates of adults in in the Commonwealth as well, puts you in a different position.
Absolutely. I fully support that.
And again, you're saying, I just to repeat that it's voluntary that you're not asking. So it's voluntary information that if if parents or guardians want to share, they can.
Yes. The next piece is just kind of an idea, you know, last year, if you recall, on August 12th, I believe, the Commonwealth provided all this information where they said that these were the processes that we're going to do. They did the same thing this year on August 13th. Kind of give you an idea of of some of these documents, and these documents are public. They were linked to the 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 next section of the board minutes. And and they are also on the COVID, the district's COVID page. And these provide a summary of of the con, you know, of various components, the contact of the close contact proceedings that the Department of Health and and the Pennsylvania Department of Education have provided us. And and most of this is backed up through the PA Han system. So the Health Alert Network, they provide updates on how you should go about these proceedings. What would happen for staff and students who test positive? An update on what school closing metrics would be, and and a couple other components here. The one thing I I can say about close contact identification and processes is much more complicated, obviously, than last year. And if you look at this in terms of a flow chart, you have two pathways and pathway one would be individuals who are vaccinated or and then pathway two would be individual unvaccinated or vice versa. So there's two different sets of of guidance for those individuals. Just as a reminder, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, so when we talk about all of this, it's like the CDC, you know, the Department of Health, so on. So the Pennsylvania Department of Health still maintains a close contact definition that is individuals who are within six feet for 15 consecutive minutes. This is an area where the Department of Health in Pennsylvania diverges from the CDC. The CDC does a 15 minutes in a 24 hour window. I did outline here in the in the PA Han 533, the Pennsylvania Department of Health does identify certain situations where they will look at. You know, they'll they'll seek more information about being less than 15 minutes or looking at that contiguous 24 hour period. And I outline those here, being extremely close face to face, having a prolonged exposure. Someone who's exhibiting significant symptoms. Someone who's singing, being in a in a in the band or crowded inadequate ventilation, you know, being indoors as an example. So generally, you know, this is a part of the case process when our nursing team provides this information, you know, I'd write a little, a little update about what it is, and the epidemiology team at the Department of Health will provide components to that. As was shared earlier, it it is important to denote that the CDC and the Pennsylvania Department of Health have made an exception to the close contact definition for students only. And that exception drops that six feet distancing down to three to six feet. And if both individuals are masked, they would not be identified as close contacts. So it's an additional layer into the contact identification process over over what has previously been said by the both the CDC and the Pennsylvania Department of Health. Of note here, it's important to note, though, that that's only for students, so school aged individuals. It is not for teachers, staff, or any other adults in the setting. So students who are within three to six feet of each other, who are both masked. And and again, they use the language of CDC consistent incorrect use of masking. So to the points that were shared, you know, that's something that, you know, as educators, we have to constantly teach. You know, how do you go about doing a lot of processes and procedures and something that we, you know, can always improve on? And then you have other preventative strategies, you know, physical distancing, increased ventilation and so on. But, you know, those would be the two options, and that's just a component of that. The other piece here, which we've run into on several occasions already, prior to the start of the school year with staff members. And I just want to provide a additional information on this. So the household contact, and I'm just going to use myself as an example, because it's easy to explain it in a situation. And so I have two young children at home. If one of them tested positive for COVID, you know, they're five and 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 four years old, they cannot fend for themselves. I'm not going to like leave them in a room. They can't fend for themselves. I'd have to be interacting with them on a routine basis. So I would be considered, you know, effectively a household contact because I'm constantly restarting my time, you know, where I'm coming in contact with them as positive, you know, one of them as a positive. So, you know, what the CDC and what we have shared with families throughout this process is if you're a household contact and you can isolate away from the individual, you can effectively start your time, you know, clock whenever your last contact with that individual was. And if if you can have them in a private room, using their own bathroom, so on and so forth, you can isolate away and you can maintain separate areas. And then you go through the the 14, 10, or seven day quarantine period. The problem is, is if you can't maintain that and you are unvaccinated, it could be up to 24 total days that individuals are out. Because it would, it could potentially be that you have to wait till that positive individual's 10 day window is up. And then as the close contact in the household can't, you know, be away from that person, your isolation period then starts your after your last date of their infectious period. So 10 days of their, you know, isolation. And then you would have to quarantine as an individual who's a close contact in the household for a period of seven, 10, or 14 days. So at the best case scenario, it's 17 days. The worst case scenario, it's 24 days. The one piece of clarification we've gotten is that fully vaccinated individuals who remain asymptomatic would not have to participate in that at all. Meaning that we've had a number of staff members who've shared, you know, a positive household member. And while they've been asymptomatic and maintained asymptomatic nature, you know, they would just follow the CDC's guidelines for fully vaccinated individuals, which means they would go about their day wearing a mask and getting tested two to five days following their last contact with that individual. So that's been a positive in that, but it just complicates this all significantly more. Any questions on that household contact piece? It's, I I do apologize if I'm not explaining it well. So the other two pieces here with with close contacts, so like I shared, there's a fully vaccinated and an unvaccinated component here. The Department of Health still maintains the three quarantine periods of seven, 10, and 14 days. The 14 days requires no testing. It has a significant, you know, has a a a small or marginally higher percentage of of likelihood that the individual would not be carrying COVID at 14 days than the 10 day. The 10 day quarantine also does not require a test, but requires, you know, it recommends significantly symptom monitoring through day 14. And then the seven day quarantine with, you know, when that was instituted, the district pretty quickly instituted that last year, that would require a test on or after day five. And then that individual could, upon receiving the results of a negative result, return after day seven.
Hey, Tom, there were some, I thought during the comments, somebody had mentioned modified quarantines. This is all set by the state. We have no, at the school district level, we have no ability to set our own quarantine policy and or timeframe, right? I mean, that's, this is all dictated by Department of Health?
What's being shared about the modified quarantine is in Bucks County. So if you have a county or municipal health department, you're on, you're allowed to operate under the guidance of those organizations. So in Bucks County, the the school, you know, guidance comes directly from the Bucks County Health Department. I will say that on Tuesday of last week, they did actually update their mask recommendation to being recommended. They released guidance on Sunday, which outlined all their school piece. And then on Tuesday of last week, they updated it to doing mask recommendation, which you'll see school districts, you know, the most close to us, Palisade School District, on Wednesday of last week changed, or maybe Tuesday or Wednesday last week, changed their masking policy based on the Bucks County update on Tuesday. But the modified quarantine that's being discussed at at out of Bucks County is because when a positive case occurs in a Bucks County school, they interact directly with the Bucks County Health Department. We interact directly with the Pennsylvania Department of Health because we don't have a municipal or county health department. So we operate under, to your point, the state recommendation, because that's who we interface with because of the ability to, you know, that's, that's who we are prescribed to interface with.
A lot of people on the call tonight, my two cents on that would be Lehigh County. As my understanding is, has quite an influx of federal and state funding. And there was ever a good time to develop a Department of Health within the county. We've seen, I think, here at the school district, we've seen how Montgomery County and Bucks County have had much greater leeway because they've been able to, and also with sports teams, it's been all across the board. If you have a I think Bucks County has done really well down there because they have their own. And and it's a shame that in Lehigh County, especially with hearing from all these local doctors, we have such wonderful health networks here. The idea that we don't have a a health, a health department, I think, is is really to our detriment. So to extend people are on tonight and would like to express that to their local representatives, or excuse me, to really to their county commissioners is who they should contact. My two cents, thank you.
Absolutely. The the last piece then is for individuals who are fully vaccinated. Again, individuals who are fully vaccinated, they would not have to quarantine as long as, you know, they're two weeks following the the final dose in the series, whether it's dose two or dose one, depending on the series, and they remain asymptomatic. What the CDC is recommending there is that those individuals do get a test. There's a thing, they should get a test between days two and five and and wear a mask following the last, that last contact until they either day 14, if they choose not to be tested, or upon the receipt of a negative test. So you have these two divergent paths, and obviously, we are in a school district where we are lucky on the 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 shape of the district, meaning that K to six, we have, you know, students who are unable largely to to receive the vaccine at this point, should they choose. Whereas most districts have a setup of a traditional middle school, six, seven, eight. So that middle school is broken up with students who are half eligible and half not. Whereas we have a a a school where one grade is slowly becoming eligible as the year goes largely. So it's a, it's a different situation than most districts are in in this area. The the one other thing that I think is really important is this piece here, which I know affects a lot of people. At this point, the CDC or the Pennsylvania Department of Health have not extended the the quarantine period for previous individuals who have had COVID, meaning that if you've had a COVID infection, you still are only given three months of of leeway out of a quarantine. So, you know, that is still the case. So if if you're a close contact within three months, you know, the CDC and the Department of Health are only allowing for a three month exception from a close contact. I I would say of note here as well is we are suggesting, you know, you know, we would like people to get screenings and provide notation on this with with our medical staff, you know, with our nursing staff so that we have confirmations on this. The next piece real quick is just, and not much changes.
Can I just quickly interrupt one question? When you're saying one of those items was if you're waiting for a test, you have to act as just to clarify for the public, if we do decide and if folks do decide to opt into that pooling and testing of cohorts that we discussed on the previous item, that I assume would not, because you're asymptomatic and you're doing it voluntarily on a scheduled basis, that would not be considered waiting for a test result. So in any way, correct?
I'm not sure. We wouldn't know who the who the test participants are, or we wouldn't know who the 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 positives are. So I I believe I'd have to confer with with the organization and what the policy is on that.
That was my only question, either in participating until you get the cohort result or because that's going to be a question someone's going to ask. It just occurred to me as you were going through that. Thank you.
Yep, I'll get an answer on that.
Appreciate it. You understand what I'm asking.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, great.
The the only other thing in terms of waiting for a test, you know, I'm not going to get into this into the all the weeds, but it's really similar to last year, that if you have a positive test and you're symptomatic 10 days out from day zero, 24 hours past with a fever, the the other component there, as well as if you're asymptomatic 10 days out from a positive diagnostic test result. So I believe based on that, and again, I'd have to confer with the Department of Health, but to to that question you just asked, Mrs. Game, and it would be, you'd still need the positive diagnostic test to prove that you're symptomatic or that you're an asymptomatic positive. So it would likely be that we're waiting on the test because you're asymptomatic. So, yeah, I believe your your thought process on that is is spot on. But I could get, I'll get a confirmation.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
The next piece that I think is important is to discuss these, the closing metrics, and and they are outlined here. You'll notice a couple of things that that are significant changes from last year. If you can recall from last year, the number of individuals was only students in last year's information from the Department of Health and the Department of Ed. So they do include student and staff, doesn't affect our school numbers, you know, to to bump us in different categories. But you will notice the number of cases in the threshold are significantly increased. So the closure metric last year was, you know, three to five, seven to 10, much smaller. So you'll note, of note is Hope on Liberty Bell fall into the small school still, and it would be a 25 case in a 14 day window. The IS in the middle school would fall into the the medium, and that would be a 25 to 45 case. And again, this is based on 5% of their student populations. That puts them at like a 37 or so. And the high school falls into the 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 900 plus large school, 45 case. There is one caveat that's built into this that is different from last year, though, is that would be free simultaneous classroom transmissions. So they use the word outbreaks, and that's used pretty consistently in the Um, so they use the word outbreaks, um, and that's used pretty consistently in, um, the, the language of the CDC. So again, that would be transmission in school amongst two or more students. Um, and, and the example they give is, is athletic teams and band. Um, so that's a different situation than having forty-five cases. Um, and, but you'd have to be able to identify that transmission is occurring in school. And again, as, as we've shared, you know, we, we were, we were unable to identify that happening last year. So, you know, that speaks kind of to the, the conversation that's been occurring tonight. Uh, th- this one potentially could lead to s- some more challenges. Again, it's potential. I don't have, I don't have a, a crystal ball on that. From an operations standpoint, you know, when we look at the way schools operating and this kind of speaks to the component of this, we're looking at all after school activities occurring, you know, just following the, the way the health and safety plan is outlined. You know, the piece with all of this is accurate daily attendance is going to continue to be really important on who is, who, who is where and where, you know, the people they were around and so on. Um, we're saying that school assemblies can occur as long as we're maintaining that three feet of distancing. Um, to the questions that Dr. Serene had about dining services, again, um, maintaining, uh, you know, the greatest distance possible is what we're going to attempt to do. Saying that we're going to guarantee X number of feet is something that, you know, I'm not going to say because it's, it's not, you know, able. We are going to spread people out. We're going to use all available spaces. And to the comment before, eating outside, I know that I've had conversations with the principals, um, moving students to, you know, when they're done with eating, moving them to recess earlier at the younger ages and, and not having them sit and wait and things like that are potentially solutions to a lot of these challenges. So, you know, it's nothing off the table in that, um, and, and, you know, we'll adjust space as we need. But, you know, I can say, I think we were more conservative than a lot of places last year, um, in the cafeteria and, and, and we're going to continue to do the best with what space we have. But again, we have large, you know, essentially the majority of students back, um, in those spaces. Questions about lunch? I know that's something that.
Yeah, a, a question, and I don't know if we have this or not, but w- we know that we didn't really see much transmission in terms of cases within school being the case. Was there anything within the cafeteria that came up? Because I, I'm thinking back to when restaurants were closed and then they reopened and we heard from New York State, less than two percent of the infections being reported were tied to a restaurant, even though patrons were unmasked. I mean, are, are, did we see anything different in the cafeteria setting last year? And I know it was different than what we may see this fall, but it just doesn't seem to be the case that that's a, an area where it spreads for whatever reason, based upon the public data that's been shared about restaurants.
I, I don't know if I'd be able to answer that. We did, we did have students who would interact and, and we would quarantine some students based on close interactions. You know, you're asking people to sit six feet apart and they're young, young individuals and they'd be jumping on each other in some places because we would, we primarily use the cameras to identify any situations in the cafeteria. The, uh, CCV cameras, um, you know, generally speaking, you know, we would quarantine individuals. And as I had shared, you know, we wouldn't have, you know, transmission that would be a very, it goes back to that P A Han five, 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 three, three. We were looking at situations where people would potentially be close to each other, um, face to face, um, kind of jumping on each other's backs prior to like the cafeteria monitors intervening in, in the younger areas. So, you know, we don't have any example of that, but to, to your point, they were six feet, you know, of distance in most settings. So the high school and the middle school using desks is a very different situation than, you know, the elementary school, you have elementary school kids, they're elementary school kids. So they're moving around, you know, as much as the principals would be in the, the space and, and the cafeteria monitors would be there, they're still adjusting them. So, um, you know.
And it sounds like kids were still being kids, so.
Sure. Absolutely. Um, in terms of the music department, um, we are gonna have, you know.
Yeah, Tom, just on that, I had some addition, I, on the dining, on the cafeteria issues, can you explain to me what, what that's gonna look like, uh, say at the elementary level? I mean, last year, I mean, my understanding last year was, I mean, I, I think they were spread out even outside of the cafeteria into the gymnasium. I think they were sitting, looking in only one direction.
We are gonna still try to main one, r- remain one direction, um, in, in the cafeteria spaces, just because, you know, that, that is, uh, you know, what the recommendations are.
What, right, what, see, I mean, this is where I get. Yeah. You know. Wha- what? Wha- what is the basis for that? What's the right, what, what recommendations are, are those?
You know, I believe the, the basis of it is, is that the production of aerosols would then be going a certain direction as opposed to if you think about the traditional tables in some settings, you're sitting directly across from someone, um, and you, you know, you're exchanging respiratory aerosols. Again, I, I believe that's.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I, I think I've seen some stuff. I mean, good lord, I've read so much stuff about this stuff anymore, but I thought for the most part, if you're in a room, the idea that I'm pointing away from you is gonna make a difference if you're gonna be in there for twenty. I mean, that seems like, from what I've, uh, come to understand of all this aerosol, I, which I'm not an expert in, I get it, but I mean, this is where, you know, I, I I have some, some real concerns about, you know, look, I haven't made my mind up about the masking issue. I'm still trying to figure it out as I'm, as I'm listening to everyone here tonight. But I, you know, at some, I, I really am persuaded by the idea that there has to be some level of normalcy for some of these kids to interact at lunch.
Well, and Jeff, your, your question, the, the Plexiglas shields that we still see everywhere, that's a shield, but it's open all around it. It, it came out months ago that that has no effect because guess what? Things float around in the air that gets around the Plexiglas shield. Now, if somebody were to sneeze directly on it, that might block that, but once it's aerosolized, it goes where it goes.
I mean, I think part of it too is you have to look at the space, how big it is, what's the ventilation of that individual room? Yeah, I mean, I agree. I, I think it would be great. And that's why I was getting at it a little bit earlier. If we are gonna go with the mask mandate, I do want kids to not have to go through masking their entire day at their desk with breaks, of course, and then go to lunch, be exposed, because you obviously can't mask while you eat. And that's really frustrating. And I think that, um, from an emotional perspective, when you feel like you're doing everything right, I think that is somewhat damaging. I think it is for us as adults too. So I, I am curious. I mean, I know we're gonna still try to space and face, I mean, I understand the directionality, concept. I do agree that it's somewhat, it's hard to really prove one way or the other that it's actually working. Um, other than at least if you're not facing somebody that closely. I don't know if we could get creative with respect to at least if people are facing each other, it's spaced, um, a little bit more to help prevent too much exposure and the need for quarantines, um, and so forth. But perhaps, you know, when you're next to each other, you know what I mean? Like there, there's, I think, ways you could be inventive with how you make the box. Just throwing it out there because I agree, you know, that was one thing I, I heard. You don't want to feel like you're going to lunch in a prison. Especially at a younger age, especially if they've been sitting in a classroom all day and facing forward and paying attention to their teachers. I do think there's value in trying to figure out if there's some creative methods to improve that portion of the experience.
From a perspective of class, we've been very clear with our staff to date that, that they should be returning to working in groups, working in partners, not just sitting in a, a, you know, soldiered row, um, throughout the time period, but also monitoring, you know, how long are those interactions, uh, monitoring who's having those interactions with one another, um, uh, and, and going through that process, which is documented, should there be a challenge there? You know, in terms of lunch, you know, there, there is flexibility in terms of, of the types of setups. Um, there's not a ton of flexibility in terms of the types of furniture. We did purchase some additional furniture to use to help mandate some of that, less of that feeling of what that was. And, and to be honest, you can't use desks in all these settings because we need the desk in the classroom because thankfully people, everybody's, you know, for the large majority are returning to the classrooms. Um, you know, luckily we were able to get those extra desks last year from a neighboring school district, which we can still use in some of these settings. But, even last year, to say that we, when you would go into the cafeteria, nobody would be speaking to each other and that it was like a prison-like setting, I can tell you, I was in a lot of lunchrooms, you're still interacting with the people around you as it was a normal lunch period. Um, you know, the kids were still talking, still laughing, doing those things. And that's what we absolutely want to get back to. Um, but to that point, you know, you know, masked or unmasked, um, the reality is there's more students in that space, um, you know, during that period of time. So, you know, whatever we can do to, in order to kind of reduce that number of individuals that would be identified as a close contact potentially in that space, you know, i- it's, it's, it's within the due diligence to do, um, but also to the same component, we're not gonna, our goal, you know, no, no teacher got into education because they want to make things horrible for people. So, you know, we want to try to make this the best that we possibly can, um, using the information that we have.
And I appreciate that. I just, I wanted everyone to have the chance to actually hear it at home, you know, what, what, you know, what the year is gonna look like. Cause those, those are kind of the questions I'm getting, um, beyond masking. Okay. Are they gonna get to use lockers, for example? Okay, good. See, that's an important question, isn't it? Because, you know, like my, my kid was like walking over completely hunched over because he took his whole life every day in that backpack, no matter how much we insisted he did need everything in it. That's good. And books, we're gonna have textbooks again.
Sharing books.
Eliminate the contact. Okay, good. I think those were the big ones that I was hearing about from kids, so.
If you could get you a chance to think, Priya, I just want to say there were a couple of board members today who had the opportunity to attend the, um, new inductee staff luncheon and say welcome. And I was really glad to get to do that at noon today, but one of the things I was also glad I saw, and I would have, I would have never known was the effort that went into making the different furniture that Mr. Ruff just talked about, available and the configuration, if you could, I have, I, I didn't know that kind of tabling existed. So that if you can kind of picture some of the furniture he's talking about, if you played with transformers as a kid, these are like lunch table transformers. You can reconfigure and really make it feel like a much more normalized, at least I felt we were very socially distanced. Now I realize there were fewer of us in the cafeteria and that's not going to be capable in every setting. But I felt we were completely socially distanced and I understood what they meant by to the greatest extent possible while still facilitating social interaction. That was really cool to see. And I'm, so I'm glad I got to meet the new teachers and inductees, but I was really glad to see that new furniture at work. So just, just a perspective for those folks out there. And thank you to all the facilities folks who transported that in there and took time to set it up and put cards on so that you could track kids' locations for cohorting, you know, on those tables wherever they chose to sit. But just my two cents, I, I, I got a better picture of it than ever before today.
I have a question, um, Mr. Ruff, you talked about, you know, kind of having the classroom setting return to more, you know, traditional group work and such. Uh, are teachers going to be encouraged or required to kind of maintain that three foot of distancing? Because, uh, wearing a mask, if you're less than three feet apart, it is, has no benefit for removing quarantine, which is really a big issue that I'm concerned about.
Yeah. So, so what, what we're saying for classroom setup is the greatest extent feasible, but we can actually maintain three feet in general and, uh, in almost every space K to twelve, there are spaces in the high school, um, because of the shape of certain high school classrooms that cannot maintain three feet i- in certain classrooms. Those rooms have, you know, it been identified, the nurses know which rooms those would be and, and you know, the setting in those spaces is there. So we would, you know, the classrooms will be set up with three feet of distancing. Three feet of distancing is actually midline to midline, and that's much closer than you would believe in, in most settings. So that being said, but still having students say, okay, we're gonna get up and move to stations and the students are gonna move around those stations. It's unlikely that type of work lasts more than fifteen minutes. And, and or you're moving and throughout that process, you're not sitting stationary within that process and the stationary movement in the classroom. Um, so the other piece there is, you know, as was shared throughout this meeting, the ability to go outside, the ability to take a class outside to do those other types of work, the ability to do music practice or other things outside. These are all things that have been a common place, um, that, that should be kind of done, looking at both recess and PE, return to that pre-pandemic, going outside, not wearing a mask while you're outside, but not just smashing the students into a big pile and doing, you know, some other type of activity like that, but getting them outside, no mask, doing those activities in recess and so on. And if you're a student that wants to wear a mask when you're at recess outside, okay. But the reality is they're not going to be hit in a huge giant cohort in those settings either.
And since we're on the topic, Tom, um, do, are we gonna have an official policy or guide, um, so to speak for faculty, um, when it comes to masking breaks? Like if we kind of started with one, I, I mean, we kind of started with one, I feel like last year and then I don't know if it was, uh, just curious because, I mean, it is, it is hard to wear a mask. I personally wear a mask, um, also at work, like many physicians commented, and it does get uncomfortable. Um, especially when you have to wear glasses, which I have to sometimes as well. So I'm just curious whether we were gonna, I mean, I, it'd be very hard to do, but I think if you just use timing, um, as your guide, so that you don't fall under that, it fall into that fifteen minute, you know, it, you could probably space out the mask breaks, for example, um, with respect to both time and distance within the classroom, just throwing it out there because then you wouldn't run into that fifteen minutes. You know, I, I just wondering if somebody else has already come up with something like that for a school district, maybe locally. Um, I'm just talking, you know, on the, on the fly without real.
It's something I can absolutely reach out to. I, I honestly haven't put a ton of thought into a mask break because right now masks are not.
We don't have, I know, but.
Uh, but it is something I can absolutely, you know, should that be the direction that the, the board goes here? We can definitely reach out and discuss greater with, with the, the folks at St. Luke's and then looking at what the regional schools are doing. It's a very easy question to ask and it's, it's also, you know, the, the, you know, it's a conversation with the teachers as well. So, you know, coming up with that, you know, process is something that, you know, how close are you to the ability to go outside? What is the, the, the routine process? You know, how can we build that greater? Yeah, we can absolutely look at that.
That's a, a really good idea. I think that would alleviate a lot of the, um, I don't know, the stress, just taking it off once in a while. So, thanks for mentioning that, Priya.
From another, just basic operations, obviously athletics have been going, um, you know, and, and again, the CDC's basic thought on ex, uh, outdoors is, you know, outdoor transmission is extremely unlikely. Um, so we would continue to, to, you know, the, the sports and athletics programs would operate, you know, the way they, they, they are operating at this point. You know, cohorting is the last thing I have on here, and that's not really recommended at this time, but it is discussed that cohorting could be brought back, should there be situations that, that deem that. The, the next piece of, of this and the final component of those, um, is just to kind of go back over that exception to close contact, which I already shared with you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Tom. Um, in regards to recess, um, what, what's the highest grade level that has recess? Do we know? Is there, I mean, I've been an advocate for more recess since I've been on this board. I never get anywhere. Um, but it seems to me that, that would be a no-brainer, uh, at, at this point in time, uh, to get kids longer periods of time outside without a mask. As long as the weather's conducive. Um, has there been any discussion about that? That you're, I know this isn't, that's not necessarily your bailiwick, Tom. I'm just, you, you just take, you generally answer all questions, so.
No, I, I believe the building.
Has there been any discussion of, of, of greater numbers of recess or expanding recess?
I've, uh, the building principals have discussed that, um, uh, in terms of, you know, opening recess potentially earlier during lunch. I do know that the secondary schools have also provided opportunities to go outside, whether the high school has outdoor classroom spaces that they, they've, they've invested money in the past year. Um, the middle school obviously can go outside, the use of the gym, the track, um, the, these areas are, are a bit, you know, readily available. It's just a matter of, you know, making that decision to go out there, but it's something we can discuss. You know, I, I, I can't speak to a schedule right now or, or pretty much set for the school. So adding additional time and then removing the academic time, you know, I don't necessarily believe that would happen, but to your point, potentially eating lunch outside and then also starting that process, absolutely, those things could, could happen. Just a matter of monitoring and, 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 you know, properly having that monitoring occur and making sure that the locations for that are occurring in places that are, you know, secure and safe.
Yeah, Tom, I mean.
That would be great from a wellness perspective. Sorry, Mr. Demme, but from a wellness perspective, you know, more fresh air, the better. I mean, certainly you could, I understand the, the limitations with academic time, but maybe, um, not just lunch, but you know, sometimes like a smaller class, for example, you can go outside and read aloud for, you know, I just thinking about even when I did with college classes, for example, that were smaller, so. Sorry, Jeff.
Oh, no, it's okay. I, I, I just would hope that we would, um, uh, Larry, I'm sure is listening as well, um, you know, empower our teachers to feel free to think about these things. I mean, my, my interaction with the teachers is that, and maybe I have more interaction with elementary school teachers than, than the secondary, but I feel like they feel like they're very restricted by, you know, that they're gonna get in trouble because they're not following, um, a- all these myriad of, of requirements that we've placed on them. And, and I would, and I don't think they feel necessarily free to think outside the box about some of what we're talking about here to, to try to get their, and I, I know we're encouraging that, but I, I, I hope we are trying to empower our teachers to feel that they, that we want them to find ways to think creatively about, and I, I think they've done a wonderful job. I'm not, I'm not being critical. I just want, I want to continue to really empower that as we go into this year, is they continue to find ways to, take advantage of the outdoor spaces or, or, or just doing things differently that, that engages students, um, that they, they don't feel that they're necessarily restricted, uh, so much by these. Obviously they are in a way, but I think if they put their minds to it, they can find, and they have in the past, and I think they'll continue to find creative ways to, to work around some of these issues and still be safe. Um, so I hope we're. to work around some of these issues and still be safe. Um, so I hope we're, I hope we're doing that. I think we are.
Yeah, and we can, I can discuss the building principals more strategies that we can do on that as well.
I, I just want to, um, you know, to add on to that. I think that going on, um, what Dr. Serene was saying, um, you know, if we can give, um, you know, teachers some really clear guidelines about when, what a mask break can look like. Um, you know, I think I have a lot of confidence in our teachers that they are um, gonna notice if a child is struggling. Um, I know that for the vast majority of kids do, do okay with the masks. But for those kids that are struggling, I do have confidence that our teachers are gonna know it. They're gonna recognize it. Not just our teachers, the IAs, the nurses, the secretaries. We're fortunate that we have a, you know, small enough schools where everybody, the custodial staff all the way to everywhere knows the students. Um, so if they're starting to see, you know, kids that are struggling, I have confidence that our, our staff is going to, um, to recognize that. And we have guidance counselors and we have, um, in our, in our buildings and, um, so that makes me, you know, feel better. Um, I do, um, agree with Mr. Dimming that maybe just having some, you know, set kind of, you know, guidelines that might help guide the teachers as to, um, you know, this is how you can do a mask break, this is when you can do a mask break. Um, you know, and putting those, uh, in place, I think would be, um, I, I know would make me feel better, um, as well. And I'm sure obviously it makes our students feel better. Um, you know, if that's, if that's the route that we're going.
Okay. This slide just kind of provides some information. I tried to provide some information on the difference between a, a recommended and a mandatory masking policy um, of, of a couple of situations, um, just to kind of give an idea that there is no foolproof process here. Um, you know, in a three to six feet, um, classroom setting with an infected individual in the classroom. If the carrier is masked, any individual within three to six feet who is also masked would not need to quarantine in a recommended policy. If the carrier is not masked, any person within three to six feet, um, would need to mask regardless, um, of that. Um, in, in the mandatory policy, because of that exception, anyone within three to six feet would be, um, you know, a- able to not quarantine. Um, the hallway is brought up numerous times, so there are no hallway passing times that would meet that fifteen minute, uh, window within the district. Um, obviously it's a, it's a large area, um, and, and the potential for crowding, so that would put you into that Han five-three-three. However, um, the, the reality there is most people don't, you know, if we think about it as fish swimming in a, in, in, in a stream, they're not with the person consistently throughout that process. So, you know, as they're moving through in the secondary levels, um, you might be walking with someone as a peer, but like people are diverging throughout the hallways, especially if you've been in the middle school, it's like a maze, so nobody's going that same direction every which way. So there is no fifteen minutes, so generally we don't identify clo- close contacts in the hallway. Um, we do tend to use a, a camera to, to, to review that. Um, but, um, there would be certain situations if someone was like visibly, like very ill and coughing and doing all those types of things in the hallway and that could be observed and they were extremely ill in the school. Again, we didn't have that situation where an extremely ill symptomatic individual last year was within the school walls. Um, we did have individuals who obviously presented symptoms, but we're not talking about someone who was like, you know, extremely, um, ill. Um, and again, that would be the same generally for both. Um, the cafeteria, as I shared, you know, you, you, there's nothing around the cafeteria. In a mandatory masking process, you could ask people to put their mask back on or move, you know, either of these, you could ask people to, you know, you build a system to the points that have been made here where you move students outside. Um, you present outside, you do alternative spaces, you limit the, the, the process of the number of people there. Um, so both have, have the ability i- in the cafeteria to provide some solutions, um, to that. And then lastly, you know, I did just put here, you know, these are the organizations from a, you know, a, a national state, local, regional level that are recommending this, um, at least for, you know, you know, St. Luke's is our community partner that we, we tend to, to, to spend the most amount of time um, working alongside and, and, you know, St. Luke's, you know, did have a most recent meeting this week. And at that meeting, they did clarify again that they're recommending a universal masking for four to six weeks and then a reassessment at the conclusion of four to six weeks. Um, you know, it's too, too difficult for them to say at the next four to eight week window what that looks like. So it specifically said the four to eight weeks after unknown and they'll continue to monitor closely to provide recommendations and updates, um, to, you know, to the, to the regional schools. Um, but that is where they are, you know, at that point now, and that's who we spend, you know, our, most of our time interacting with.
Tom, I'm sorry, uh, uh, based on, when, when did that timeframe start? Or is there, or is that from the beginning of school?
It says the, at least the first four to six weeks for the start of school is what they said.
Thank you.
Yep.
Can I ask a clarification question? Um, if, it, it, from what I understood in terms of quarantining, if a teacher is unvaccinated, even if both parties are masks, if they're within six feet of students, they would have to quarantine?
For fifteen minutes, correct. So a, an unvaccinated teacher who is within six feet of an individual for fifteen consecutive minutes would have to quarantine, correct?
Okay, and so do we have any standards or guidelines that we're, um, giving teachers to kind of try to make sure that we have enough staffing for the, for the, uh, school year?
Well, you know, we've obviously done the process that we've done to engage substitute staffing. I will be per, you know, providing information to teachers about the, the, the component of, of, of that, that, uh, close contact identification. Um, you know, being within six feet for fifteen consecutive minutes, not to say that it's uncommon, but um, depending on the level of the teacher. So it really depends on the grade level and depends on the type of teacher. So, you know, certain classifications of teachers would spend much more close contact, uh, with students in that setting. Um, so it's really going to depend, you know, there is no vaccine mandate for staff, um, in this state. Um, you know, that is starting to happen. Um, obviously if, if you're following, so the state of Washington has, has a, a, a secondary or a, an educator vaccine mandate. I believe New Jersey stated today that they would be pushing through an educator vaccine mandate. Um, Governor Murphy's office stated that, um, whether it was official or not. Um, so at this point, it would be, you know, operating under the same process really that they operated under last year. Um, just keeping that mindful notation of where they are, what their components are, who they're interacting with. Um, but yeah, that, that exception does not apply to any adult.
Are we, just as we discussed earlier this meeting, um, suggesting or talking about the idea of parents voluntarily offering their vaccination status for their students, their, their children. Are we asking, or do we have similar plans to ask teachers if they would like to voluntarily, you know, divulge their vaccine status? Perhaps they could, you know, avoid some of this complication or?
For the same reason, it would be extremely beneficial. Yes.
Right, right. So, so. Right, but we have plans to perhaps put out that kind of communication and, and if someone wants to voluntarily offer that information from a point of it's a great data point and also it'll just help us plan in our buildings and.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
And Mr. Roof, uh, uh, a moment ago, you were talking about mandatory vaccination. Um, and I don't know if, uh, Mr. Audi could speak to that. What, uh, in the state of Pennsylvania, outside of a statewide mandate, are, are school districts permitted to uh, require vaccines for employees of their own school district?
At this point, the answer is no.
But why is that, Attorney Audi? Do you know, is that school, uh, we don't have the authority to do that or?
We, we don't have the authority.
So, and a question given when I saw it took place in Butler County, what authority do we have to actually have a mask mandate?
We have, we have the CDC and the Department, State Department of Health.
To, to that point, there, there is a school district in, in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Upper Marion that is, uh, that did collect vaccination status and is doing pool testing on non-vaccinated, uh, staff members. To that question, Mr. Dimming.
Thank you.
Um, so I g- I guess the next piece on the, on the agenda is then.
Actually, I, I wanted to follow up on the response from Mr. Alley. What governing body gives us the authority to have a mask mandate? Because CDC, they can't issue a mandate. The PA Department of Health currently cannot issue a mandate. So what governing body gives us the authority to put a mandate in place?
The, the CDC can supersede, it, it gives us the authority under the, under the federal regulations, we would have to follow those.
And, and that's your opinion on that, to be clear?
That, that, that's my opinion, that's our firm's opinion and that's all, I mean, almost e- everybody else's opinion, uh, but for one firm in Bucks County that sees it differently.
And, and this solicitor in Butler County, Pennsylvania, north of Pittsburgh?
Perhaps, I don't know.
It, it was done on the seventeenth of this month. It's fairly commonly reported at this point.
Was it the state of Pennsylvania or the DOH or the DOE that indicated that local districts would be making the decision because the state was not? It's not like the state mandated that we couldn't issue mask mandates like in other states, correct? And just, just more for information.
Department of Health and the Department of Education recommends that we follow the CDC guidelines. The CDC guidelines recommend mandatory masks.
Is that it for you, Mr. Roof, um, for that?
Um, there, there are, the last thing then is the three options that are included there. Um, for the health and safety plan update, I, I, before we get into the mask discussion, I can say there are just a couple of other um, things in there that are, that were updated and those are universal across all three. Um, there, we did add a section to discuss the transportation, um, federal order. Um, so just to clarify that that is there, um, because that did come out, you know, our, our initial health and safety plan was on the twenty-eighth of June. Um, PDE reaffirmed this, um, on the, on the sixth of July. Um, then just included, uh, for a couple of conversations that had happened, you know, what volunteers would have, and then there's some specific language that the volunteers would follow. Um, you know, they establish health and safety procedures, whatever that ends up being, so that we would allow volunteers, um, you know, and visitors in the district and that they would just have to follow the health and safety plan. Um, to some questions that Mr. Dimming had asked over the last year about community facility use, we specifically said that facility use would be allowed in the health and safety plan per the policy, um, so that that's clearly stated in the plan. Um, so that's outlined. And then the last piece we just put in, um, for some extra, some sports and extracurricular component, um, specific to St. Luke's is, um, rec- return protocol. Um, so that's clearly outlined in here and just some basic ideas that we would encourage people to bring their own drinks, um, not, not required, but encouraged. Um, you know, encourage to maintain distance as much as they possibly can. Um, you know, to self-screen, um, and that attendance should be taken. But then each of the three options then would have three different, uh, you know, mask components. Option one would just be that we continue to have a recommended, you know, uh, you know, recommended, uh, mask component. Um, option two, um, would be that, uh, we do a uh, requirement, um, to be reviewed at the second board meeting in September, which would follow that, uh, that four to six week, um, you know, guideline from St. Luke's. Um, and then option three is a more tiered component, which is similar to what has been kind of, um, out there, um, in, in some other areas in, in the region. Um, and this would tie directly to, uh, the, the three different tiers tied directly to the, to the, um, CDC levels of transmission, putting, uh, low and, um, moderate into tier one, um, putting substantial into tier two and putting high into tier three. So again, we would be in tier three right now. And the primary difference being that, um, tier three would be required regardless. Um, the tier two, which again is the CDC substantial, um, would have a recommendation for those individuals who are fully vaccinated, you know, have the ability to be fully vaccinated. It would remain recommended, um, recommended for, for athletics and performance arts. Um, and then, uh, we would also require any staff member to wear a mask while interacting with students. Um, and then the low would be recommended, um, for individuals. So, um, it, it's, this follows a, a, a se- essentially a number of different metrics. Primarily the, the Lehigh County data, meaning the case rate per hundred thousand and the PCR positivity. But then also looking at, um, specifically the, the total number of cases within the district in a seven-day window. Um, if there is any evidence of community spread, which we'd be able to tell from those components. And then to that c- conversation earlier about i- if, you know, Mrs. Nord's comment earlier that if we had a significantly high vaccination rate in one of the buildings, um, you could move that building to the, to a different tier, um, even if we maintained, um, you know, substantial spread and that would be a conversation um, that we would have, uh, you know, amongst teams here. So it's a much more complicated, but it's using much more dat- you know, a number of data sets as opposed to just saying that we're going to, um, you know, either not, um, you know, uh, mask, uh, recommended, just a broad base, we'll do this and re- re- reassess in a couple of weeks, um, or the tiered component.
So how often would you reassess this? How often does this get, you know?
So there's no date included in the, in option three. In option two, um, we said the second meeting in September because that would fit us right into the, that would be like week five. Um, looking at where we are. And then option one, you know, uh, would just, you know, obviously could be, you know, all of these could be recessed whenever, I believe, I don't know, Dr. Musoline, you know, what your feelings are on that.
But the tier three, how, um, those two, three-tiered method, um, how often do you, would you change?
You needed two, so essentially, we're saying that two weeks into, um, you know, movement, you know, you would need two weeks. So if you were in tier three right now, um, and we were a hundred and forty-six, I don't remember what it was off the top of my head, but we dropped down next week to, to ninety-three. Um, we would, we would continue to monitor and then it would say it would drop down to eighty-seven the following week. Then you can move into tier two after two complete weeks is what we're suggesting. Um, but there could be a situation where you had classroom transmission and you had to have to move a building based on classroom transmission. Um, you know, you know, depending on that, or, you know, as we had shared, you know, this could change dramatically in, you know, January, it sounds like when, uh, you know, pending, you know, movement in the process, you know, in the new year, you would have, uh, five to eleven-year-olds potentially being able to receive the vaccination. Now that could change based on the, you know, experiment of that process, but um, you could have a greater number of vaccinations amongst the school community.
Which option are you looking at there, Tom? Is that?
Uh, this would be option three. Option two, um, would be, um, just a fo- a four to, you know, a four-week, five-week, um, component. And then option one would be just maintain the existing plan, but add to those couple of things, transportation, the athletics, um, the, the, the procedures that, uh, the other components.
Is option three the addendum?
Yes.
I can't, okay. I am having a hard time finding that chart of.
So when you go into there, um, you would click on, uh, this link right here where it says SLSD tiered mask mitigation measure.
Tom, I have a question about the tiers.
Mm-hmm.
Are they linked with, uh, our classification, like substantial, high?
Yeah. So, um, tier one would be the CDC, um, low and moderate. Um, tier two would be CDC substantial and then tier three, um, whoops, would be, uh, the high level of transmission.
Seems like there are a lot of different moving parts with these tiers and you did a great job describing the differences. I don't mean to diminish the description, but like you said, there are, I think you even said there are a lot of different layers and, and overlap here. So while certain, uh, standards might be met in one tier, you would have to look at individual data and while it, it's not necessarily clear which might or might not impact. It's not going to be a clear-cut thing. It's kind of, you have to look at the big picture and all of these points. So it's, it's not a formulaic approach. It's a look at the big picture and look at the overall.
Sure.
Health, right?
Because right now we would have no students, so that like, you know, less than ten or less than twenty or more than twenty, we have no students, um, demonstrating or staff, um, demonstrating, you know, COVID at this point.
Right.
No evidence of community spread within the school. Um, and we don't know the, the vaccination rate other than the county vaccination rate, which is, you know, one of the highest in, in, in the, in the, uh, state.
And with regard, that was leading in my next question with regard to the vaccination, vaccination rate I see in tier one. If we, if we were in the situation two, after two weeks of being at that level in tier one, even though vaccines would not necessarily be available to our K through six population, we, according to this, we would be moving to masks recommended, right?
Just, you could just move a building, you know?
Okay, so, but it, you could just move a building, but this doesn't necessarily make that decision. Where I'm going with that is, is when does that decision get made? Like how, how, th- does this, this isn't a formulaic way of making that decision, right? I'm, I'm.
It's not an advanced statement, no.
Because it's hard to know what, what do you wait, right?
Right.
There's so many different data points. You don't, I think what you're getting at too, Emily. I mean, I appreciate, I think this is great to incorporate the data, but I think at this point, and until this would be vetted, since we don't have our own health department, maybe by St. Luke's giving us some guidance, I would say we go with, um, I would be in favor of option two, um, at this point.
And I think it's more clear-cut for parents to plan as well. I agree with what you're saying, Priya. That's kind of where I was going. I'm glad you, you. I'm glad you, you heard that. I'm of similar opinion. Plus it puts us in that timeframe of when we reevaluate anyway, according to the metrics. It looks like there's no way we're going to be at a point where we would even move out of tier three anyway. So it doesn't limit our options. It just gives us more time and data to consult the experts.
Well, the reality is I, is my, you know, just going off the low, moderate and high, Tom, were we ever out of high last year?
Last, last school year?
Yeah, when we went back to school.
We were, yeah.
In April and May, we were, I believe we, we left the higher level of transmission in mid to late April, off the top of my head, but.
We got, we got a month of moderate in?
Yeah. I believe so. I don't know the exact date, but I believe yes.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that to me, I've seen that movie before. Yeah, it is what it is, but the reality is that's, that's mass for a year.
So I like the, the idea of considering various data points, right? Which is again, going back to, you know, collecting the vaccination rates for our schools and maybe at a more granular level. And, and so for that, but, but I do have concerns at least initially about that tiered approach because it's not clear. I think, you know, immediately, you know, how each of those components is weighted and, you know, how that process and the decision making would take place. So, you know, I think that I, I wouldn't be opposed to, you know, revisiting that as we move forward based on the data. And as we see, you know, which data points are going to be more relevant and more functionally applicable. So I think, you know, I'm not opposed to considering that moving forward. But I think for the initial decision-making point, I would prefer the, a simpler approach.
Does anybody else have anything else they want to add?
Well, I mean, from my perspective, I, I would prefer a language that would have the mask mandate end, you know, sunset. Especially if you're not doing a tiered. So instead of reviewing it, the mask mandate ends at the at the four, at the second meeting of September, unless it's reauthorized.
That was the whole point, right? I think that was what we were gonna, we would be revisiting it.
It would be on the agenda anyway, right?
Well, that's not what the language says though. What the language says is effective, it goes in to be reviewed. What I'm saying is effective, it goes in and it ends unless it's re, revoted on, in other words, reestablished. So the, the, it's a, it's a sunset clause essentially. You're approving a mask mandate and the mask mandate ends. It's not reviewed. It's, it's, you know, maybe it's a distinction without a difference, but to me, I, I think the idea, the idea that it ends, that, that would take the, the board would basically have to re-up it, not, not review it. It basically, and it would have to be just re-upped constantly based off, off of board votes would be something that I would envision.
I hear what you're saying, Jeff. Sorry, I didn't want to interrupt you. Go ahead.
No, I mean, that's just been my experience from the last year is that, you know, we go into these things in perpetuity with no end date.
To be fair though, Jeff, this is the first time we actually got a, an endpoint for reevaluation from our medical personnel, which I agree. Last year, I mean, it feels like we're still in the same year as last year right now. But at least this time, where our, the recommendation is coming with a four to six week reevaluation. I mean, I get what you're saying. I mean, I'm not.
And hopefully, hopefully that's what the insight that they're looking at, what's going on around the world with the Delta variant. And then it's going to drop off a cliff.
I think what matters right now is that it is continuing to go up. And while we can look at what's happening around the world, I think it's pretty important that we look at what's happening here in Pennsylvania is starting to go up.
And it would be nice if we did that.
The infection rate is.
It would be nice if we did that with a relative value of comparing to what the April numbers were or the numbers last year. When you look at hospitalization, to say that hospitalizations are up ninety-one percent from zero. Yeah, it, it sounds concerning, but when you look at it, is it?
Yes, because it's a different version of it. So that's the thing, like, yeah, I agree. You know, you want to look at hospitalizations, things looked great in the summer. My family and I were so excited, you know, we, my, I'm lucky enough that my children are above the age of twelve. And I was so excited when, you know, the new CDC recommendations came out with respect to optional mask wearing. But it wasn't truly optional mask wearing what they recommended. They actually said that vaccinated individuals could choose whether or not to wear a mask. And that's not what happened. So now you have a variant that's farly.
About the warning that's been added to the mRNA vaccines about myocarditis?
And I haven't, I wasn't done, Mr. Lysat, and it's a different topic. What I'm trying to indicate to you is that this variant is different. It is more transmissible. What is scary about it is that vaccinated individuals can transmit it too. So it's a different, it's a different ballgame in some ways. That's what I'm, the point I'm trying to make. It's unfortunate. I don't want to be in this situation anymore with respect to public health, but it is the way it is. And talking about vaccines, we're not, we're not telling people to get vaccinated. So I don't know why you're talking about being vaccinated.
Bringing up vaccines like they're a panacea. They're not. Vaccines give you protection. They don't prevent you from getting the virus.
Hey, when was the last time you got smallpox or polio in this country?
It, that's a different.
You know why? No.
It's a different thing. And everyone also talks about how safe the vaccines are, where we don't have long-term data on these vaccines. Let's think about the history of medicine and things that had issues with them that we didn't have long-term data on.
Forty-two at night. The topic is not vaccination. I am not in a position to vote on vaccinating our children or our.
But we're having that discussion too.
No, we're talking about masking.
Talking about is that.
We're asking people for their vaccine status and all of these other things.
We're not.
I don't know if we have the powers of the school board to do any of it.
No, you need to know it so you know whether that person has to quarantine. If they don't want to give that information, that's their choice, but then they'll quarantine.
I think all, what we're all talking about is that there's multi-tiered approach and vaccines is one of them. Masks is one of them, distancing is one of them, hand washing is one of them. So that's what we're, that's what we're talking about. And that's what we need to kind of focus on and deciding right now.
So to Mr. Dimick's point, Dr. Musoline had chaired the idea that we could put the board review to, to be reauthorized at the second board meeting.
I think the, what I was going to say when I told Mr., I was going to speak, but I didn't want to interrupt Mr. Dimick a while ago, is that I appreciate what you're saying, Mr. Dimick. But I think there is a significant difference between a board communication going out, between communication and transparency. Two of our themes we want to work on as a board. I think there's a big difference between a communication going out saying masks will be required and that will end and expire and we will end it on this date. And mask will be required and the board will revisit that decision on this date. Because unless you're one of the three hundred plus people listening on this call, I think folks are going to come to that second meeting in September and saying, you said you would end it. And now you're redoing it? I think the communication point while you're, you, you know, yourself, Mr. Dimming said, you know, it's kind of semantic. But I think from communicating a message to the public about what the board's decision was and how we are, we've proven that we, last year we were flexible. And as new information came available, we adapted and adopted those professional recommendations. And so we have revisited and we have continually updated and changed and moved as have, as has science. Because science is a process. So too is this a process. And we are open to that process. But I think it does a disservice for parents planning and for communicating to others of something that says it ends and it will be over in four weeks versus the board's going to talk about it again in four weeks. And I think we owe it to our community to be as transparent in that regard as possible. Because I don't want anyone for a second to think if in four weeks, the numbers are or, you know, heaven forbid, we all want this to be over. I don't want to wear a mask. Teachers don't want, we all know this. But for the sake of transparency and being fair to our community about what we're really saying, I am not, as a board member, I want it to end.
I'm just going to say that one of the things I appreciate is kind of really this, this kind of discourse, right? Because as Mr. Dimick was making his point, you know, I was thinking, well, I, I don't really have any objections to that. Makes sense. Maybe we just quantify it and, and put some parameters around the date. But that is, is I think a really important point that Mrs. Gaiman is making in terms of setting expectations, right? And, and, you know, it, it does send kind of a, a message that, you know, there's going to be this, this definitive, you know, it's, it's only until this date. And hopefully that will be the case, right? But I, I just, I guess I don't see, you know, I mean, to me, the language is pretty clear. It says masks are required in all spaces and buses to be reviewed at the second. It, it gives a, you know, the date that it's going to be reviewed. I think that makes it clear that we're going to, you know, maybe we can say reviewed and reassessed.
Yeah. Or do you, I mean, would it be better if it says revoted? I mean, what do you, if, I don't know what would.
Putting that ending on it does create a, a, a potential messaging problem.
I, I kind of like the messaging.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I. I mean, at the, at the point to me, I, the problem is, you know, I try to, I try not to do, I do dumb things. I try not to do them twice, the same thing. And, you know, there's no talk of six foot spacing tonight. And I can remember this time last year, that six foot spacing put us, you know, everybody tonight talks about stay in-person school, in-person school. I mean, I blew my top off talking about in-person school last year. And, and it's just, you know, I, I gotta learn something too.
You know, it's frustrating. It's frustrating, but it's because we learned from it, right? We didn't learn about three feet. We are learning. That's the problem.
Right. And I'm learning and I'm learning because the, the CDC, who was the one telling me six foot spacing? Don't worry about, you know, do not be concerned about the children that'll be most affected by the closing of schools, Allentown. You know, where, you know, we don't even know where those families are. I'm just saying, you know, I, I've learned something too. And it's to be a little critical about these things. I'm going to, I'm going to, you know, I, I, yeah, I'm not happy about it and I'm not convinced of it in any way. But I'll listen to the science on it, but what, what I don't want to do, the same mistake I made last year, which is it's a, it's a never-ending system. So towards the end of the year, we could have gotten out of hybrid. We absolutely could have gotten out of hybrid, but it, it just become, it had become what it was and we just kept rolling. This is a big ask. This is a big ask and I, I don't think in any way, I think the only way I can support it is if I know it has a date certain to end. And if at that time it's required to re-up it, then we re-up it and we re-up it for another six weeks. And then we re-up it for another six weeks. That's the way I can support this. I can't support this in any way that allows us to just go on with reviews or with additional guidance.
Something in the wording then that says it's a, it's a required voting item on the agenda? Like would that work, Jeff, for you? I mean, I, I understand what you're saying. I don't want it to go on forever either for anyone's children, including my own. So I, I don't know, could we, could we word it that way? So it doesn't give the implication that it's definitely done and over with. But rather it has to be readdressed and has to be voted on at that meeting, one way or the other. Either you keep it or you get rid of it. I mean, so could we make it, does that wording work? I don't know what's allowed.
Review and vote on the health, whatever this is called, the health plan to, you know, in four weeks, whatever, to review and vote?
That you consider it for reinstatement.
No, that implies an end, but this will be reviewed.
That's what he wants. It's an end. That's what we all want.
To agree with Jeff, you know, I heard a lot in the visitor comment about, you know, please don't make medical decisions for my children. And, and my job is not to make medical decisions for our students or our community members, but my job is to keep school open. And my biggest concern is the lack of education students are going to receive from having to quarantine. And, and we, you know, under the current system, there's, there's not a good solution for that. So if we listen to the Department of Health and we follow the guidelines, you know, and we don't mask, it really creates a serious problem for students missing tens of hundreds of thousands of days of education. I mean, I just think of how much schooling my kids lost last year because they had to quarantine and we're not COVID positive. And, and we live streamed classes back then. We're not doing that this year. So, you know, I don't know if it's we look at a tiered approach, if we do, you know, link things like we did last year. I think that has a feel in terms of saying to the community, this is not what we want. And, you know, I do not, I do not automatically support mask mandates. I really don't. But I have a legitimate concern about students being able to get educated and without masks. You know, I don't know how we work around the quarantine guidelines.
And we are live streaming. We are live streaming. You missed this at the last meeting, Jen. The question came up, Tom answered, we are live streaming for children that are in quarantine.
So we will provide access to, to the instruction. It's not going to be like last year where the teacher's going to be tied to the screen, right? So they will be able to access the instruction, be able to, you know, the access to the learning management system. But it won't be that the teacher is going to not move from the screen though. So last year, the teachers were statues in front of a screen and they, they pretty much were stuck to that. You know, to your point, Dr. Smith, there should, you know, should the board say that they'll do, you know, even a six week, you know, four to six week mask, there should be very few people in that quarantine, which means that focusing on the students who are physically in, you know, in person, we, we don't want people to be tied to a screen, you know, they'll be able to open a link, participate in that sense of being able to participate in the instruction. But the teacher's primary focus is going to be the students who are physically present in the classroom.
Right, like even if you. Access to audio in Google Classroom.
And, you know, audio, they'd be able to still ask questions through the, the process and, but they would not just be identified as that person is like literally there in front of you the whole time.
And there's no testing. I want it, right?
Yeah, testing labs, they would have to then come and complete that stuff back at school.
In, in, right, in the, at home.
Well, that's the thing, even if you don't believe in the science, let, let's say you don't believe that masking works and, and you don't believe in vaccination. At least, you know, I, I think everyone, despite, you know, where their viewpoints are on both of those issues, agrees that in-person education is what we want. You know, like Mr. Dimick said, I am not happy that last year we spent a great portion of our school year in hybrid because, you know, we were, we were told, you can only operate on the guidelines that you were given because I'm not in public health, you know? And I recognize that limitation, even though I'm a physician, I know that that's not my specialty. And I've, I shouldn't be making those decisions without the advice of those that do know that information. So I think for me, that's kind of the deal breaker here is I, I don't want kids to have to go home and quarantine this year as much as we can avoid it. And that's why I was speaking to lunches as well. Because it's, you know, we, we, we need to be able to assess where our kids are with respect to learning loss. You can't do that until kids are really back in school, taking, you know, certain standardized tests and that type of thing. So.
I, I just want to echo Dr. Smith's comments because I think that continuity of education and in-person schooling is critical. And one of the things that really stood out to me, Tom, in your presentation, when you had the different scenario-based situations was that, you know, and I wrote it down, you know, because you said, you know, if the carrier is not masked, then any individual within three to six feet of them, regardless of their masking status, then has to quarantine. So, you know, those individual choices really do affect other people's ability to access the in-person education. Because, you know, if the other student is masked, but the carrier is not, then math students will have to quarantine. So I just think overall it is, and, and, and again, very appreciative of all the input that we got from our medical advisors and the medical community with, you know, the data and the research. I just, I think it is the best option that we have to maximize in-person education for all of our students. Again, nobody wants it to last forever and I'm very comfortable, you know, putting some way, you know, to address Mr. Dimick's concern about putting the parameter in there as long as we don't create, you know, wrong expectation that it's, you know, but I think everybody is in support of, I mean, that's the plan, right? If we go with this approach, then it would be at that meeting and it would be revisited and revoked on. If we go with this approach, then it would be at that meeting, and it would be revisited and revoked on.
I, yeah, I have to echo, you know, all of that. And I don't, we don't need to keep rehashing it over and over again, but the bottom line for me is keeping kids in school. And with the quarantine guidelines, that's, that's huge. So I, can we move forward? Is there language, Mr. Dimick, you being the lawyer? Is there something that you would be comfortable putting in there and proposing?
I was thinking.
I know, it's hard.
It's been at work too long, it's been at the desk too long. Well, yeah, I mean.
Reevaluate.
Yeah, re-evaluate, guys, reevaluate. I mean, you're, that's what you're going to do on, on the second, second meeting in September. You're going to reevaluate the entire situation.
Reevaluate, reassess?
Yeah.
Re seems to be the prefix.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Reevaluate, it says that it's going to be at the Board of Directors meeting.
Yeah, just change one word.
To re, yeah, reevaluate.
It says re-evaluated at the second Board of School Directors meeting in September, right?
Are we good with that?
That's, that's exactly what you'll do, you reevaluate, you'll either keep it or you'll jettison it, one of the others.
Yeah, but my, my only, the distinction I see is that I want it to end. And in other words, I want it to be a sunset clause, right? It's like, you know, it's like the, it's like the taxes that get passed from time to time in, 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 in Congress, right? It, it ends unless it, unless you vote for it again. I think the language of.
How about required vote to reinstate? Sorry, I'm so tired of this, I'm just like speaking it out loud. Sorry, sorry, Jeff, I didn't mean to, but I just was speaking it out loud because it was going to forget it.
Somebody said reevaluate and vote.
Yeah, reevaluate and vote, that's.
Yeah, how about that?
Get a required voting item, I, I think in order to carry it forward, it has to be voted on.
Yes.
Oh, that's what I'm trying to achieve.
Okay, let's do it.
Well, what, what Dr. Serene said, but you gotta find the language to say it.
You didn't like that one.
You don't like reevaluate and vote?
No, I'm just teasing, I, I don't think it made much sense, actually, but.
I mean, the point is, how many weeks is that?
Five.
Four or five.
Like four and a half.
Is the minimum, minimum order recommendation.
It'll be four.
Yeah, they said four to six, so.
Yeah, it's four, it's for basically four weeks, it's the minimum.
Do you want to wait till October?
No.
We're just, Jeff, if you write it, we'll sit here and listen, because we've, we've offered a bunch of stuff, I'll just go for it, seriously.
Yeah, not just, just like sunset.
Renewed or reinstated?
How about re-reviewed and revoked?
Thought we said that first.
Bill, did you say renewed?
Yeah, what'd you say, Bill?
Either to be renewed or reinstated. Either one of those words would work. And just to clear up a perception that you may have think, I'm not against vaccines, but I'm very much in favor, working in the pharmaceutical industry, mind you, and having worked on vaccines, I'm very much in favor of informing individuals on what you're getting. And there was a lot of talk across the board by medical professionals and others tonight about vaccines and the COVID vaccines in particular. And people, I don't know that they're aware that a warning has been added to the mRNA vaccine about myocardis, and that's something people should be informed of, in particular, before it's injected in a child. And there's many other things that you have to consider. So I don't want in any way, shape, or form be part of a board that is suggesting that parents run out and get a vaccine, they need to be informed on what they're doing.
I've, I've never, I've never said anything.
Just, you know, I, I, I find it fascinating, and I've got to say this, I find it fascinating the number of parents that have come out and wanted masks and wanted vaccines. I wonder how many of them got their kids vaccinated for influenza? Or thought of putting a mask on their kid in 2018 when it was the worst influenza outbreak ever in the last 20 years?
It's midnight now.
It's all perspective, it's all about thinking about things and what's going on.
Here's one, Bill, one second, I wasn't going to say anything, but it's interesting that that's what you took home from the visitor comments, that you felt the need to.
No, it's not what I took home.
No, 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 what you felt, you needed to, wait, let me finish, I wasn't done. What you felt, let me finish, what you felt you needed to rectify. No, hold on, that's what you felt you needed to address from the visitor comments, but you didn't say.
It's not the only thing, there's a lot of misinformation that was shared during those visitor comments by all.
Okay, can we, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to stop this right now, because this, this is not productive. It is midnight, and I think we all, we still have plenty on the agenda to get through. So let's talk about this, are we satisfied with re-re-reviewing or reevaluating and voting on it? For, at the second, at the second.
Policy will be reevaluated and requires a vote to continue, how about that?
Reevaluated and revoked, done, just, I make the motion that we change the wording to be reevaluated and revoked.
Revoted.
We have a vote and a second, reevaluated and revoked, to change the language to reevaluated and revoked, a vote and a second.
Is revoked a word, really?
I, I don't, I don't think that's proper English, but.
Do I care at midnight?
Reevaluate and vote.
Yeah, reevaluate.
And vote.
At the next, at the next.
Reevaluate, revoke is a word, but, but you could just as easily say reevaluate and vote.
Do that.
Yes. Okay.
I changed my motion.
And I, I second change.
Reevaluate and vote.
I take homage to the fact that someone said revoked's not a word.
That's my fault, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we have, and I'm gonna, I'm, we have a new, Emily, your, your new motion is, you're making a motion, masks are required in all indoor.
Effective August 24th, 2021, masks are required in all indoor spaces and on buses to be reevaluated and voted.
Upon.
Yeah, I'm letting him type as I speak, reevaluated and voted upon at the second Board of School Directors meeting in September. I make the motion to change the entire document, just that sentence, and then I make the motion to accept the entire option two document with that language change. Parsons, do you second?
I second.
Okay, and we are voting. And I'm going to do a roll call vote, Desai, yes, Dimick.
After you hear the, the language again, I'm sorry.
Jeff, I can read it, effective, it's on your screen, can you see your screen, the second paragraph?
Yes. Yeah, I see it.
That's the only change that, everything else in option two is the same. Highlighted in gray.
Effective, masks are required in all indoor spaces and on buses to be reevaluated and voted upon at the second Board of School Directors meeting in September.
Yeah, I just, I, I probably have a moment. Effective August 24th, 2021, masks are required in all indoor spaces and buses for a period of five weeks. This, this requirement may be reauthorized by the school, the Board of School Directors.
That's not what my motion was.
I know.
We're voting, we're voting on what this is right now.
Okay, I, I'm trying to reach consensus, I mean, I know it's late, I'm just trying to reach consensus, I'm not trying to be obstinate. Trying to, trying to work here.
Well, I think we were trying to find a compromise between what you wanted and what the original wording was.
Right, and I, I was unable to, I was unable to provide language because I'm brain dead. I put some here together, and I'm just trying to find some consensus, I'm not trying to be difficult.
Jeff, I'm not trying to be difficult either, but can we, would you like us to skip you and we can come back so you can continue to evaluate your position?
No, he had a different language.
But that's not what we're voting on, we can't, we're in the middle of a vote, we're in the middle of a vote.
You've got a motion on the table.
Yes, we have to vote on it.
You gotta continue with that motion or table the motion.
We, we thought that you were engaged when we put the, so we thought that this was.
Jeff, I, I will motion to table.
Thank you, second.
Can I, can I, we were in the middle of a, of a.
So, so wait, you can vote on tabling, it's got to pass or fail, if it fails, then you vote on the motion.
There's, you can't, you cannot debate on a motion to table, so we just have to vote on that.
You vote on it.
Okay, but I guess I want to understand what the intent of, of the.
Jeff would like to change the language to something he is more comfortable with that pretty much is along the same lines, but he's not comfortable with how it's worded currently.
That's all I'm asking.
And can you tell what you want to change it to?
No, we can't have any discussion, we're in the middle of a table. You just have to say whether or not you want to change the language. If you want to change the language, it has to be tabled. So if you want to change the language, you vote yes to tabling. If you do not want to change the language again tonight, you vote no to tabling, and then we have to vote. So yes means you want to change the language, a vote of no means you do not want to continue the language discussion.
And, and Jeff, are you saying that your intent is, you want to make a small change?
We're really not supposed to be having discussions.
No, we can't do that, am I, we can't, we can't, I'm sorry.
We're supposed to just vote on the motion to table the consideration of the policy.
Okay.
Roll call.
And Desai, yes?
Yes.
Uh, Gangware?
I like it the way it is, but I, I, I also, I, I want to be, I want to be able to compromise and come to a consensus that we are all happy with, so.
Exactly.
All right.
Wait, no, what was?
I said, yeah, that's fine.
You voted yes, I'm voting no, I just want to be done with the semantics, so no.
Lisette?
Yes.
Nord?
Yes.
Parsons?
Very curious, so I'm saying yes.
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Okay, so Jeff?
Yeah, this better be good.
Right now, here it is, here's your moment.
Okay, thank you, folks, I appreciate it, I know it's late, I'm not trying to be difficult. And if this doesn't fly, I'm happy to support the language we just discussed, uh, or something like it.
Hold on, they're getting, they're getting the cursor ready so we can all follow you, Jeff, can you just don't start talking yet? And.
And, uh, before I say it, I, I'm, I think five, five weeks runs is past the next meeting, is that correct? I don't want this thing going before another meeting, right? Five weeks gets us to the next, next.
Five weeks is the next meeting.
It, I'm, I'm sorry, five weeks is that second meeting in September, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah.
I would, I would recommend that a board, effective August 24th, 2021, masks are required, or excuse me, 2021, comma, for a period of five weeks. Masks are required in all indoor spaces and on buses. Period. This requirement may be reauthorized at any time by the school board, directors, by the school board, period. So what that does is it sets a mask requirement for five weeks. And I, I would, I would recommend that that, we, we continue at five weeks. And that everybody now or wants to review this component would be clear that the school board at any time can reauthorize, or we could even say extend, I think reauthorized would be the better way because the idea would be you'd be reauthorizing this in five-week periods. Uh, revoting on it, and we require a vote. I think that, to me, is, you know, like I've said, I, I have concerns. Look, I, I've listened to everyone, I've tried to be open, it makes sense to me. It's against what I kind of my gut was, just like it was against the last year, but I'm willing to go with it. But I'm, I personally can only go with it if I know there's end date certain to it. And that I can at least, and that we're going to be constantly revisiting this, constantly having a large, a, a high bar to pass from St. Luke's to convince us that we're going to continue to do this. Because I think there are, I really do believe there's a, a large amount of downside to our children with this mask mandate, but I, I, I am persuaded it's the right thing to do in short periods. But I, to me, I could, I can, I could support something like this. But the, the idea behind it is it sunsets every five weeks. And we've got to reauthorize it based on what we learned from the facts on the ground at that time.
Okay.
I second Jeff's motion. I still say, oh, go ahead, he made the motion to change the language, you second, can I just have a discussion point?
That's good.
I still just say saying reauthorized is still sending the message to anyone who is not listening right now. Reauthorized isn't a sunset date. And I would prefer reviewed at any time by the school board of directors. It's the same message Jeff's saying. Required for a period of five weeks, this requirement may be reviewed at any time by the school board of directors. Jeff, it gives you more flexibility, it could be reviewed at two weeks.
Review does not give more flexibility, reviewed means it stays in place, and there's no voting that has to take place. With this, you have to vote on it.
Right.
To reauthorize it and to keep it in place, you've got to reauthorize it.
To, to Mr. Dimick, I feel like it's important for all of us to have a consensus on this. I think it's, we're all saying basically the same thing. We're all saying we want, we don't want to disrupt kids, and we want to protect them while listening to our medical professionals. So I'd like to, if we can, I'd like to vote on this now. Unless there's something that really, somebody that really has something different and pressing to say.
I, I honestly think that this basically says the exact same thing as it said before, just in a little bit more of a succinct language.
Yeah, okay, so we're ready to vote? Okay, roll call vote, Desai, yes, Dimick?
Aye.
Gangware?
Aye.
Gaiman?
Yes.
Lisette?
No, I do not think that we have the ability to put a mandate in place.
We're just voting on the change of language, actually, right now, we haven't even voted on the plan yet, this is just a vote to change the language.
I thought we were voting on this.
We're voting on the language, and then we get to vote on it.
Lisette?
I don't care, I'm abstaining.
Okay, Nord? Nord?
Uh, yes, but I, I thought that you weren't allowed to just arbitrarily abstain, I thought that you had to have a.
Yeah, me too.
That's correct, you have to have one of several legitimate.
Again, I don't think that we have the ability to be discussing this at all, nor do we have the power to enforce it and put it in place, that's why I'm abstaining.
Don't abstain, vote no.
I, I did vote no, I got called out for that, too.
Okay, so Mr. Lisette, are you a no?
I'm a no.
Uh, Nord?
Yes, aye.
Parsons?
Yeah, yes.
Serene? Serene?
Yeah, I thought it said yes, she was muted.
I, and Smith?
Yes.
Okay, and now we need to vote on the entire plan.
So moved.
And I have a motion to, to approve option two, this is option two that we are talking about, the health decision plan.
What's going on? I'm the mover, I'm the mover, oh, I'm sorry, I'm tired.
So we have a first and second, can I, a roll, roll call vote?
Discussion, 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 I'm sorry.
Okay.
Did we not have that already?
No, I just need some clarity, I, I'm sorry, I just, it's, it's late, I just want to, the difference between option one and option two?
Option one was, was leaving things how they are for masking, changing the rest of the stuff, the bus and all that, but leaving masking optional.
Right.
And then to, option three is the tiered system with all the different, with all the, the different requirements.
Thank you, Anita, it's late, got it.
Yep, okay, so we, can we vote?
Yes.
All right, Desai is yes, Dimick?
Aye.
Gangware?
Aye.
Gaiman?
Yes.
Lisette?
No.
Nord?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Serene?
Yes.
Smith?
Reluctant, yes.
Okay, thank you, the motion passes.